Everybody, welcome to the Monday, June 10th Select Board Meeting. Can I please have a roll call of attendance?
Haidakoff, here.
Manzrick, here.
Capiello, I.
Gibson, here.
Sakosha, here. Please, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda review and approval. Any comments from the board?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Manzrick, I.
Capiello, I.
Gibson, I.
Sakosha, I. Okay, I'm going to open up the first public comment session of the Select Board Meeting. There's two public comment meetings, you're only allowed to speak at one. Please keep it light and respectful. If you do come up and share, anybody online or in studio that would like to come up, please do. Okay, nobody in studio or online, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. And that brings us to public hearings and invited guests. School Board Liaison Report. And we are fortunate to have Rick Walker here. Not chief, Rick Walker on this one, right? I want to make sure I have my notes right.
Thanks for having me. My counterpart, Carrie, is at a sports awards banquet for one of her kids tonight, so she sends her regrets. There's not much going on from the school board perspective. The district is busy because they're trying to finish up our budget year. Ends at the end of December, so they're trying to tie up all those loose ends. And trying to get squared away, get the kids out of school next Tuesday. This Thursday night is eighth grade celebrations/graduation. The, I believe it was last Thursday, which they've been doing for a number of years, all the graduating seniors for the three schools were invited to walk the halls of the middle school in their captain gowns and the students were out in the hallways. They've been doing that for a number of years and it's very well received. And as I say, I think Tuesday is the last scheduled day of school unless we get snow. And I think that's it. We're gearing up to, obviously the maintenance department has a lot of projects to do in a real short amount of time while the kids are out of school. And late August, they'll be back in and we'll be well into budget season. But you got any questions?
No, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent, and good luck to all those graduates out there, congratulations. Acceptance of additional Barrington Library Foundation donations.
This is a public hearing?
This is a public hearing, so we're going to go ahead and open up public comment. Is there anybody in studio or online that would like to make a comment?
This is the additional funds above what was listed in the Warren article. Warren article, town meeting, accepted $327,000, and this is the additional $78,676. Notice was published in the paper, this is the public hearing, or unanticipated revenue.
Okay, with nothing in line or on studio, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. And I will say that we accept it.
And extend the Barrington Library Foundation donation in the amount of $78,676?
Have a motion? Do we got a second?
Joy, please?
Roll call.
Haidakoff, I.
Manzrick, I.
Capiello, I.
Gibson, I.
Sakosha, I. Okay, next, Barrington Library Foundation check presentation. Is there anybody from the library that would like to come up and speak?
Excellent. I think we should walk across the screen. Absolutely. It's pretty exciting, though. There's a lot of hard work went into that and a lot of giving, so the philanthropy is amazing.
You just press that one button, it'll turn green.
Yep.
Cindy Whisington, Vice President of the Barrington Library Foundation Rogers in Soto, so I'm standing in for him. It is with great pleasure that we're able to give these additional funds. And we'd like to extend our thanks to the Select Board for their support. Good teamwork.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Absolutely.
Bring that through the drive-through.
Yeah.
No, the next two are public hearings.
Okay, on to Barrington Oaks Cooperative Saptic Improvement Plan Community Development Block Rent Progress.
We have Donna Lane, the grant administrator here, and she'll take over and let you open and close public comments.
Perfect.
Kind of hard to follow that, isn't it?
We don't want to hear from you.
I'm sure you'll do fine.
So first of all, there's a public handout on the table over there, so Tiffany, can you make sure that that says it in the minutes? Because it's important. I have to read to you for one second, okay? Community Development Block Grant Funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to $500,000 annually is available for economic development projects. Up to $500,000 for public facility projects. Up to $500,000 for housing projects. Up to $350,000 for emergency activities. And up to $25,000 is available per planning study grant. While CDBG projects must primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, the purpose of the hearing is to update the public on and take comment on a CDBG project. This is a $500,000 Community Development Block Grant Public Facility Grant from the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. The CDBG funds are financing the replacement of sewage disposal systems, including tanks, leach fields, sewage conveyance pipes at Barrington Oaks Cooperative, a 49-unit manufactured housing park located on Hall Road in Barrington. The majority of the residents at the park are of low and moderate income. Additional funding from ARPA was received on April 2023 to complete all of the systems. Leach Field 1 was designed and approved for 6,600 GPD and serves 21 units. Construction work included leach fields plus associated sewer mains, tanks, pumps, AOS systems. Construction started in June 23, and the system is substantially complete and has been in service since fall. Leach Field 2, designed for 3,750 GPD, serving eight units. Work completed on this system included the installation of two 1,250-gallon tanks and three 2,500-gallon tanks and associated piping. Existing leach fields remained in service. The tanks were replaced as a change order in 2023. Leach Field number six, which replaces Leach Field number four, five, and six, was designed and approved for eight units at 32 GPD. A change order was issued for the contract work for this. Construction began in April 24 and is substantially complete in May 24. The remaining work, Leach Field number three, final design recommendations on improvements, AOS system to be completed by Horizon's engineering work to start in the summer 2024 and to be complete in the fall 2024. And DES is funding that one with ARPA funds. Total project cost was 1.2 million.
Excellent. Questions from the board or the public? Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? We're going to go ahead and...
One question. You have a... Have they started or are we waiting for the 22nd of June to be officially summer to start the project on Leach Field 3?
I don't think it's out there yet.
They're not there yet?
Yeah. But the CDBGs did the other, paid towards the others, so this one DES is going to pay for, so... When they say summer, they usually mean like the end.
Officially, it's not until the 22nd of June or some such date.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and open public comment. If there's anybody in studio or online, please raise your hand or come up. Don't see anything online, don't see anything in studio, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And I will entertain a motion from the board.
No motions necessary.
We have a progress note, right?
On to the second one for Leo's Cooperative, next page. Next page of the Town Administrator Report.
Okay, Leo Cooperative Water and Sewer Improvement Community Development Block Grant. Right?
Progress, public hearing.
Yep.
Back to Donna Lane.
So when we applied for the, I probably should have started with this. When we applied for the CDBG funds for these projects way back when, we had a public hearing before we applied for each of those. That was before the application. And then during a project, we have to have a second public hearing. This is the progress public hearing during some phase of it and near the end. That's why we're doing this tonight, okay? I guess I should have started with that one, okay? So this is a $500,000 Community Development Block Grant Public Facility Grant from the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. The CDBG funds are financing water improvements, including upgrading the existing water source as well as adding a new water main at Leo Cooperative, a 69-unit manufactured housing park located on Newton Plains Road. Majority of the residents of the park are of low and moderate income. Sewer system, the sewer system is complete. 11 subsurface disposal systems serving 17 units were installed. Pump station, project is complete, including pump stations, storage tank, building plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and standby generator. Water main, the water main contract will be starting construction shortly. A notice of award was issued in April to the bidding contractor, low bidding contractor, to complete the installation of approximately 5,000 linear feet of water main, including flushing hydrants, valves, and 70 service connections. Contractor has 250 days to complete, so we're going to be on this one for a little while. Well, a test well has been installed adjacent to the oak gravel pit property with promising results. Engineer is currently working on design and permitting for the permanent well and connection of the new source for the distribution system. And DES is paying for the well stuff. Total project cost, 2.2 million.
Excellent, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment for this. Also, if there's any questions or comments from the board? Danan?
Then if, when the, have they decided on the permanent well site or...
Yes, they're trying to get approvals for it.
They're just doing the approval.
Yeah, they're working on the approval process.
Cool.
Any other public comment, questions, concerns? I don't see anything online, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, good to see you.
Okay, so that ends a public hearing and invited guests, and we are on to the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, changes from the board?
I move we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second, roll call.
Haidakoff, I.
Manzrick, I.
Capiello, I.
Gibson, I.
Sakosha, I. Okay, on to appointments. Note, these all are discussion-only. Library trustee alternate, Richard.
Campone?
Campone.
Campagnoni?
Excellent, thank you for volunteering.
He's been to a couple of meetings at the board, I think he's going to be a real... Contribute a great deal, I think.
Excellent. Perfect, okay, excellent, on to Advisory Budget Committee. We have Amona Lapierre. Then we have a Danan Manzrick on there. I don't know if anybody's got any background on that second name. But thank you for actually, both of you throwing your hat in the ring. We're actually still short on that budget committee as well.
How many people are we short now?
I think we'll be short two.
One or two. So last year, Peter Royce, longtime budget committee member, stepped back to an alternate position to allow some of the new members to be full members. I haven't had the conversation with him yet. I believe he's still interested in serving, and he'd probably be willing to step up to a full member if the board isn't full. So one or two members.
Peter, are you listening?
Just keep that in mind. But no discussion, anything from the board, thanks for volunteering. Okay, on to staff reports, Connor.
Awesome, June work anniversaries. Timothy Booty has worked in the town of Barrington for 29 years. Scott Young, who's currently a part-time police officer, has worked in Barrington for 26 years. Katie Perry, Police Administrative Assistant, 19 years. John Huckins, who you'll remember recently retired. And now he's back. That was the plan from the beginning, but he's back in a part-time capacity, helping both the building and the planning departments, but he was hired 11 years ago. Eric Baker is one of our three police sergeants, he was hired seven years ago. Jacob Cummings in the fire department, seven years ago. Donald Morse is celebrating his sixth work anniversary this month, but unfortunately, he's leaving. He's traveling with his wife to a promotion that she received. And so we're excited for him, but certainly sad to see him go. If you know any certified officers or people interested in joining law enforcement, have them contact Chief Joy. Tiffany Cottle, our own municipal office administrator.
Five years?
Five years ago this month.
You've been with us, Tiffany, all the year after work, thank you.
Chris Cook, library custodian, four years ago. And Deborah Wood, our human resources administrator, hired three years ago. Moving on, I won't dive into these updates and steal the thunder of the Select Board updates, but I wanted to make sure that there was a written record in the Town Administrator Report for those folks interested. We had our first trail interconnectivity stakeholder meeting. This was a passion project of select person Capiello and other board members, but this is an opportunity to gather together everybody that is interested in or does trail stuff in Barrington. And the headline was, everybody around the table was so excited to be in each other's company and focus on ways that everybody could do things better. So very exciting group, and we have a meeting again next week. Town Center Advisory Board Meeting update. So we've actually had two meetings of the new advisory board. And the last meeting was much more of a work meeting. And everybody has homework assignments, we're going to meet again a week from tonight and catch up on that. But a lot of exciting things in the works for that group as they look to kind of find their footing. We're going to have a proposed mission and vision at our next meeting that a couple of members are working on. So a lot of good stuff coming out of that. Also wanted to mention a public safety building open house on August 21st. So this is in addition to the fire department open house, which will still happen in October, but an opportunity to open up the building from 5:00 to 9:00 to support the departments and their staff and certainly demonstrate the need for facility improvements at that building. So mark your calendars and spread the word, more details to come. I also, as we kind of refine how you all want updates to our strategic planning goals and future action steps, what I've done is I have just emboldened those updates from the last Town Administrator Report. So I can touch on those quickly. As you know, at our last meeting, we approved the engineering for the lot behind Allegiance Trucks. So now we're going to work with the engineer to get that scope completed and take next action steps. The library project funding plan was completed on the 13th at that Select Board meeting. The Town Center Advisory Board was formed on the 13th, that goal was completed. Community center renovation, since our last meeting, we have finalized that million-dollar grant. We've signed on the dotted line, and so now we have a 1.45 million-dollar budget. We are working with, as approved by the Select Board, Corino Construction. They're proposing a scope and timeline now, we should have that shortly. One of the priorities after we get that timeline is to start working with the leaders of the library to figure out what that construction schedule looks like. It will be unavoidable to have impacts to both recreation and library, but we'll do everything we can to minimize those and certainly services to the public. And so that's future action step, schedule mitigate project impacts. Moving on, the trail stakeholder group, that was a goal that we set. And that goal was to pull together a group, which we did, completed on June 3rd. That group will continue to meet and certainly some goals will evolve out of that, but that's the update. And looking ahead at our three-year goals, one of those has to do with the development of the lot behind Allegiance Trucks, so kind of a duplicated update there. And those are the updates. Questions about any of that?
I have a question. For the rec center renovations, I know it's a tight deadline to get that renovated and the money spent from the grant. Is there any room, given that the grant's funded from ARPA funds, which technically maybe until 26? Any room to have some flexibility on that date?
We have asked, and the answer is no. The, I don't, I think the door is just barely like a little bit cracked open. So the part of the problem is, a lot of folks worked really hard to unlock the additional funds. And the questions asked during that whole time were, okay, but you can meet the timeline, right? You can meet the timeline, right? And so I think it, I think the folks administering the grant are not interested in, at this time, asking the powers that be for any extension to that timeline because they just unlocked the additional funds. I, like I said, I think the door might be cracked open as we move forward to evaluate an extension, given the funding source, and you know, that's, you know, what we talked about. And so we'll continue to explore options like that, but kind of plan for the worst, hope for the best. Good question.
Could I sneak in something? I'd forgotten we really discussed this as a five-year goal, but the childcare business. As a suggestion, I wonder if it might be wise to come up with some sort of proposal for NHMA for this coming budget year to put that in as an NHMA point of emphasis to the legislature? Might move this project along a little bit faster?
The policy conference for this legislative cycle is done. Well, the conference isn't done, but it could be a floor proposal. The policy committee meetings are done, I guess, so we could evaluate.
They are.
The, but floor proposals are allowed, the policy conferences in September. You would propose a policy position for NHMA to advocate for at the legislature. I can tell you, based on my experience on the board, a few childcare-related topics have come up. And the most recent one, which I thought was pretty innovative, it was the allowance for an exemption that childcare facilities could apply for from property taxes. Not dissimilar to a disability exemption, an elderly exemption. And the board decided to take no position on that. Generally, the NHMA in areas like that simply supports local control. As long as it's an opt-in and the state isn't telling you, you have to do this, NHMA will support it. But the board wasn't willing to take a more active role in pushing for legislative solutions to childcare. I will say, in promising news, Stratford County Community Support Organization has a proposal for congressionally-directed spending in the upcoming budget cycle that is being put forward through Senator Shaheen's office. And that would be, if I remember right, a couple hundred thousand dollars to support expanded childcare services and support, focused specifically on those smaller childcare providers, which is similar to what, we have a kind of a childcare collaborative in Barrington where the smaller providers get together and figure out how they can all do better. But why don't you and I connect offline, Danan, and workshop what that proposal could look like? And then maybe we can bring something to the board in July as a specific proposal to see if the board wants to push that forward.
Excellent. M O A, Cottle?
Yes, so a couple of things off of the consent agenda. All of these, I'm going to ask for wet signatures tonight. The Recreation Month proclamation that was just approved. The civil forfeiture warrant for the unlicensed dogs, there are, as of the last time I checked today, 273 dogs that were not registered, that should be registered right now as far as we know.
What's the impact to the dog owners? I understand, sir. What's the impact to the dog owners?
So the eventual impact is a summons to court. So that's the eventual impact. There is a very, very small, unmotivating financial impact that totals like tens of dollars. But the kind of end goal that everybody wants to avoid is a summons to court. And this is a process that is dictated by state law. The dog licensing is rooted in ensuring rabies vaccination. And the laws are antiquated, the fines are antiquated, the process is antiquated. We do, I believe we go above and beyond to try to avoid this for as many residents as possible. Unfortunately, we have thousands of dogs in Barrington, and every year it is a problem that the town clerk feels like she's wasting her time on, the police department feels like they're wasting their time on, but were mandated to do by state law, so...
Can I say, Sakosha, how are the roles kept up to date? I mean, dogs die, how is that all?
Yep, so they get letters and they call the town clerk's office and say that their dog has passed, and they update the records. They also, you know, have records of the veterinarian that has issued the rabies vaccination, so they can verify, and some records are updated that way also.
Would it be okay with the board if we posted on the Facebook pages for Barrington, 275 of you register the dogs? The police are busy with more important things? I could say it in a nicer way, I just think it would be important to...
Exposure to, that's great.
Okay.
All right.
And then one more thing, well, nine more things technically. Recommital tax warrants, they are uncollected taxes that were previously committed to Linda, need to be recommitted to Crystal.
Excellent.
And that's as a result of a separate financial audit. When you change tax collectors, auditor comes in, evaluates, evaluates all of the taxes owed, verifies that the books are clean from the prior tax collector, starts a new tax collector off clean also.
Excellent. Perfect, okay, old business, authorization of the library bond and approval of loan agreement. Any comments, questions, concern from the board?
Just a procedural step, you'll remember the Select Board made the final determination of the loan amount at the last meeting.
Entertain a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize a library bond and to approve the loan agreement as presented.
Second. Roll call.
Haidakoff, I.
Manzrick, I.
Capiello, I.
Gibson, I.
Sakosha, I. No new business, so we're going to roll right into Select Board Member Reports. Select Board Member, Haidakoff?
So we had the zoning board met and... Actually, in between, there has not been one, we've already covered that. This week, on the 12th, which is Wednesday night, we'll be holding a land use forum. And the planning board and zoning boards will have leaders from both groups to describe what your local planning board and your local zoning board of adjustments actually do, what the scope of their work is, what their areas of expertise are that they bring to the table, what the time commitment is to serve as an alternate or a seated member. And we hope that the public, who has many questions often about how land use is developed here in Barrington, we hope people come and ask great questions.
Excellent.
6:00 PM right here.
Beautiful. Select person, Manzrick.
Transfer station met on 20th of May to discuss the CMA feasibility study for how to improve, change, redevelop the transfer station. We did not come to any conclusions, although we expect to have a proposal at our next meeting in July. There is also some consultation about composting, which we've been talking about composting a lot. About 20% of the MSWs is food waste. And so it's expensive and it's very difficult to do. I don't know that we can do it ourselves. Mr. Fox is one alternative, that's kind of pricey, but safe stuff. Library Board met on the 22nd, or 21st of May. Thought they'd come up with some cash, which they did. Nice job. Good job there. I think there's an ice cream social on 22nd, nod if it's right. And they're going to have flying dogs here, if you want to watch dogs chase frisbees, it's very cool. They did sign the SMP contract on the 16th of May. And there was a meeting of the HVAC on the 6th of June, and I don't know the results, maybe Susan? Yeah. I was there too. Oh, you were there, very good. And then there's the perennial sale was the 1st of June, I think that went well. School Board met on the 21st of May. This is, this is really kind of cool, I think the... I think the champion for children for this year was our own Wendy Rowe from the library, which was well deserved, but I think also is a good indication of one of the ways that we cooperate and how the school district and the, and the town interact. They did a survey of the three high schools. Everyone likes that idea, I think they're going, the contracts are gonna be up. Community action program in Denver, CAP, or Dover, not Denver, but Dover, is gonna work in partnership this year, this summer for weekly meals for kids program, which is also very good. School board met again on the 4th. Not much new, other than what Rick probably indicated. School ends on the 18th, and next year, the school begins on the 29th of August.
Excellent.
One thing if I could add.
Go ahead.
Barrington's own Jeff Dorell is a finalist for teacher of the year.
Ah, there we go.
Middle school teacher.
Congratulations.
So, I don't know when the final decisions are made. Not, not yet, I don't think, but, nice to have a finalist.
That's awesome.
And the 25th of July, we're having our joint meeting scheduled for the 25th of July.
Joint subcommittee meeting.
Right.
Okay. Select person, Capella?
Planning board met last week. Tracy talked about the land use board meeting tomorrow. And we're hoping we have some interest because we could use some more people on the planning board for alternates. We had our first proposal since I was sitting on the board, and I, and I think for most people on the board, for affordable housing, a proposal for 14 units off of Green Hill Road. It was a design discussion. I mean, my guess from that discussion is we may see less units, but we'll see what the, how it gets evolved. But very interesting to see this coming forward.
Excellent.
And one more thing, the trail interconnectivity. So, one of the things we have as assignments is to talk about what do we want to see connected in Barrington? So the, the obvious things were the town center, schools, rec. department, library, and town hall. But if any of you have other ideas, just let me know. And we're also thinking about what areas of Barrington we think are not well-connected with trails. So, again, if you have any thoughts, just send them to me, and we're meeting next week.
Yeah. Right. Vice chair?
On May 23rd, the Conservation Commission met, and they also spoke about the trail interactivity and are excited about what that might look like and how they can participate in that and how the, the new town center and the 13 acres might, might be shaped. So, a lot of excitement around getting connected there. They also talked about the Young Road revised conservation subdivision, seemed to be positive interest in, in the changes that were made for, for that. There are several cases before, from the planning board that they reviewed, two had no, no comments, one that we're gonna send back to you guys with questions about some septic. Library building committee met on June 5th. They looked at the energy modeling from resilient, resilient building, along with the, the plans for the mechanical engineer. And the board settled on an, an all-electric option that looks to be really good and will be in, in budgets, so. And this will also hinge on the, the future acquisition of solar, which will make the library cost of operations much, much lower. So, a lot of excitement and, and good progress there. Also, that night, the energy committee met, you'll notice right above us on the town hall, the solar installation has started here at town hall, so that's very exciting. And that should move relatively quickly, weather-dependent, of course. Energy committee's also working with our SAU, looking for energy efficiencies and, and solar possibilities with the school system. Tomorrow, the energy committee will be visiting the middle school in Durham, which has a brand-new and very efficient building. So, that's an educational meeting to, to see what they have there. There's also a draft, select person, Harkoc had asked for sort of a strategic plan or white paper about how the town can go about looking for solar installations. And so there is a draft that, that Paul from the energy committee has, has drafted. And you had mentioned both energy and conservation weighing in on that, so Conservation Commission's gonna review that next and come to, to the board with a, a plan and, and options that, you know, have some science behind them. That's everything.
Beautiful. Well, I have been extremely busy on my end. Some meetings have already been talked about, I'll echo a little bit on those. The, we'll start with the trails meeting, collaborative meeting, excellent. Eyes wide open on everybody, and it's like, hey, we, we've been meaning to get, get together. So, the experience and knowledge alone in that group, among the individuals driven there, I think it's gonna really unfold and come together nicely and have three entities under kind of one roof, per se, working together, you know, to provide the people of the town what they want, some good trail interconnectivity. Also, the, the TIF board, what a group. Excellent working group. Everybody is, seems to be staying in their lanes, productive, excited, a lot of great ideas moving. I know we actually, my, my bit of the homework is working with Scott Shepard, and one of the things is financials. And something for the board to think about, but I know we have to at least allocate the rest of the ARPA funds by the end of the year. So, maybe if you guys would consider using the remaining of the ARPA funds to go to the purchase of the town center lot, something to think about. With that, that would allow us to be able to get going over there and be able to do things on the property, like, you know, if we wanted to put a pavilion over there, we could and actually start moving some dirt over there, per se.
So, don't we have a limitation of we can't do any permanent structure for two years?
It's a, it's a dollar amount.
It's a dollar.
So, there's, once we have paid $200,000, we don't have to ask permission to do anything permanent to the lot.
We have an ARPA?
It's a, somewhere between 200,000 and 300,000.
And do you think we will have any update on Richardson Dam before we have to?
I haven't gotten an update about the ecological study. Have they talked about it at a recent Conservation Commission meeting?
A little bit, I don't recall if there was any, nothing's really moved forward on it.
They don't know either.
They're, they're gonna do the ecological study, right? And, and that hasn't gotten completed yet, so.
Okay.
They're doing a study on teardowns.
Right.
And we haven't got any.
Yeah, so that's still in progress. I don't expect any movement until that goes. The, the Department Environmental Services, as I shared, I think with a recent update, is, is less persistent about an immediate solution and is, has been satisfied that it's a work in progress. The truth be told, there isn't any urgent deficiency. It's just, we need to be working on it, or DES is concerned that we're never going to work on it. And so, the progress reports I've been giving, they've been satisfied that progress is underway. I think the biggest thing locally that will come from anything is just where the money's gonna come from, whether it's reconstruction, removal. And so, to that end, I don't know how much information we'll have. I seem to remember that the ecologist, title probably, was saying that it may be a months-long process because evaluations were necessary different times of the year? Am I making that up?
I don't know.
I'll get a more specific update and bring it back to you.
So, 'cause it's talking about spending the rest of the ARPA monies, it would be nice to kind of think about all the possibilities where we...
Well, if I get a, if I get a head nod from the board, I mean, it could be something we could throw on new business for next meeting, or, you know...
So, what I'm saying, but what are, what are other competing needs for the ARPA funds?
That I, that...
That might be helpful for comment.
Maybe pull up some...
Yeah, definitely. And add Richardson Pond to the list and provide some updates about that, but if you have other ideas that you've talked about, I mean, obviously, we've pecked away at it, we've provided employee bonuses from that money, we have bought the generator at the public safety building, the solar installation at this building, we did some work on the fiber connectivity, I know I'm missing some, but I'll provide an accounting of what we've spent the money on so far and any proposals or ideas that have come up before. And if any of you have ideas, please pass them along.
So, but anyways, the, back to the TIF meeting, great group, good working group. We meet on Monday, this coming, well, this Monday coming up. Rec. department, they're underway with summer camp, and they're in their groove, they're in their busy season, and they have, stay tuned for their Facebook for the summer concert series. There'll be dates on there, so pay attention for that. And that's all I have.
July 11th to kick off weekly, weekly for, I think, six weeks, the summer concerts. It's gonna be great.
I think, again, was sponsored by Holy Rosary Credit.
Yes. Yep. On, absolutely, under it by Holy Rosary and on their lot, on their property, so.
Alrighty. Well, this brings us on to our next public comment session of the meeting. If there's anybody in studio or online that would like to participate, please come forward or raise your hand. Don't see anything online or in studio, so we're gonna go ahead and close public comment.
One quick question, select person.
Yes.
I'm, I'm under the understanding that the planning board has now adopted that...
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And then, so that brings us on to non-public session, and I would entertain a motion to enter non-public for personnel and reputation.
I would make that motion then.
Could I get a second? Okay, no call.
Harkoc, aye.
Man, sure.
Capella, aye.
Secosh, aye.
Okay.
I'll be.
Okay.
You're not dead yet.
Everybody, welcome back to the select board meeting. Just had a non-public. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
移到 adjourn.
Second it.
No call.
And sure, go.
Capella, one.
Give him tonight.